Head and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Also, please note that there is an automatic external defibrillator located on the LC level at the south side of the doors to the elevator and one on the back wall here in this chamber. We will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, August 27, 2013. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, September 17, 2013, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property.
May I have your approval, Amy?
Second. Any questions or comments? Please vote. No, it was already pushed.
Motion passes.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions. There are three resolutions.
May I have your approval, Madam?
Second. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Commissioner Boyle? Motion passes.
Also, please note Commissioner Rogers had requested a excused absence from the meeting as he's in Washington for his work. Agenda for the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here. Item one, approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, August 13, 2013.
May I have your approval?
Second. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Corrections about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to the report from the Director of Corrections.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Mark Foxall, Director of Corrections. Before you is the monthly report for the Douglas County Department of Corrections this day, September 10, 2013. Call to your attention, enclosure number one, Administrative Services Section. We are two months into the fiscal year, and we continue to remain under budget. The City of Omaha was billed through June 2013. They paid 90 percent of their invoices through the month of June 2013. They have audited invoices through April 2013 and audited invoice balances through February of 2013. Their balance is 433, 632, 62, so that's going well. Call to your attention, enclosure number two, Community Corrections, In-House Programs, Work Release. There were 72 admissions to work release during the reporting period, and those individuals contributed 2,079 hours of community service. House arrest had 94 placements for the month. Those individuals contributed 530 community service hours for the month. Pretrial services, there were 280 offenders placed during the month. 1,555 have been placed throughout the course of the year, calendar year. 783 of these individuals were supervised in the month of June with a 96 percent compliance rate, excuse me, the month of July with a 96 percent compliance rate. Fifty-seven offenders were referred for prior prosecution. 782 bed days were saved this month. 4,965 bed days were saved this year. Community Corrections, I'm going to have Mike Myers come forward and speak just a little bit about the Reentry Initiatives Council. They met on August 30. Among the highlights were the presentation of the Offender Specialist Program by Heartland Workforce Solutions and the presentation of the Comprehensive Strategic Plan for Reentry to the council. Mike has that in hand, and I will let him speak.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Myers, the Community Corrections Manager for the Douglas County Department of Corrections. I just wanted to briefly reiterate what was discussed in the Reentry Initiatives Council meeting on the 30th, that the Strategic Plan for Reentry in Douglas County is now finally in the public domain. It was distributed at the meeting last week. It's been sent out electronically to a great number of people. And I just wanted to take a moment this morning to acknowledge the hard work of a large number of people that collaborated on the creation of this plan. Now, the true, well, it already has begun, but the true work continues. The important work is actually making this plan into something meaningful that impacts the lives of everyone, not just offenders in Douglas County. So with that, for those of you that were not at the Reentry Initiatives Council meeting, I'd like to present you your copy of the Strategic Plan.
As Mike is passing those out, I will give you an update on, we also had a community meeting with the Empowerment Network shortly after that, and Senator Brad Ashford talked about the reentry initiatives that he will be coming forward with this year legislatively. And I have had a discussion with him about making sure that he reads, and he does have, and Diane Amador from his office has, our strategic plan in hand to review. And then once he gets back, we'll set up a meeting with him to discuss, you know, what his thought process is and how it blends with what we're doing. So there's, we're ahead of the game this time on some of the legislation.
Any other questions?
Nope. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Just a comment on 24/7 Sobriety Program. It's been a busy summer, but we're working on that. We're continuing to move forward. Emails going back and forth between Bill Nicholson and the AG's office in Nebraska. So it's continuing to progress well, and we expect full implementation probably in, I would hope, late fall. So as I said, it's been a little bit more of a logistical task than I had anticipated, but we're getting some of those taken care of, and then we're continuing to move forward. So I'll keep the group posted, and we'll certainly have a launch date for you in the not-too-distant Enclosure number four. We had the Correctional Officer Academy class graduated, 10 new recruits, and they are in Week Two of the Field Officer Training Program. So that continues to go well. We had 10 started. We have 10 still going through the program. So they are doing well, and we're excited to have them amongst the veteran officers. They have, after this week, one more FTO week, and then they are on their own. So we'll continue to keep you apprised of their progress. Also under enclosure four, it's not very often that we have an opportunity to congratulate a 30-year employee, but kind of one of the unique things about this is that the 30-year employee that I'm going to announce this morning was married to a recently retired 34-year employee.
(laughing)
So I don't know that you've ever done that. So I would ask Officer Donna Fricki to come forward, please. And Donna, if you would bring your plaque that I forgot to bring. I'd like to read this into the record, if I may. Service Award, Correctional Officer II, Donna L. Fricki. This certificate is in recognition of your 30 years of service with the Department of Corrections for Douglas County. Your efforts and experience are greatly appreciated. Her anniversary date is August 15, 1983. So think of where you all were August 15, 1983. So present with Donna Fricki today is retired Officer Don Fricki. So on behalf of Douglas County Department of Corrections, Donna, I present this plaque to you for 30 years of fine service. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Coming to the microphone, huh?
I'm sorry. Thank you so much. A little nervous. I'm not usually the one standing up here. The good boss is. It really is not that difficult to do 30 years. I know in 1983, I don't know if any of you know this, the first cell phone came out in 1983.
Oh, no.
Yeah. I'm just looking up some trivia, because he said I couldn't get my certificate without a speech. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Congratulations.
Can this guy be named a success?
Yes, it is.
Oh, please. I think it's the other way around. You know, I have to tell you, for all these years, I never put two and two together that you guys were married.
Really?
No. No. It was like one of those things. I just went right over, top of my head.
That's okay.
So double congratulations on that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Now you know where all of Don's success came from.
Yeah.
Thank you. Congratulations. 30 years in this business is tough.
That's tough.
Last two weeks, it's been tough.
This year has been.
This year has been tough. But imagine soldiering through for 30 years, and every day Donna comes to work. She has a smile on her face. She's pleasant. She's eager. She's innovative. She has a lot of ideas. And like her husband, has contributed greatly to the success of Douglas County Department of Corrections, and you should be proud of them both.
I had my light on, Mark, early. I told Mary Ann I wanted to say something, and what you just said, I'm not going to wait till the end. What's been going on and what's happened internally with some of the unfortunate tragedies that have occurred with your staff, plus the housing of some of the people that you have and the difficulties. And I know you had one incident in the last 24, 36 hours. I just want you to know that this board, and I think I can speak for all of us, have tremendous compassion for the people that work there and do that job so well and respectfully. And I've talked to a couple of Commissioners, and I know some others initiated it. We want to try to do something to come down together with you, and you know that that started a few weeks ago, and it's even been tougher for you the last few weeks. When you think it's appropriate, let's make sure we get together and pay our respect for the fine service your people do in the most challenging, difficult position as their employment. When Donna said it's not that tough, I'm not sure I agree with that. It is that tough, and we really appreciate the hard work you do. And I want to say, I appreciate your great leadership, and I got to work with your dad for many years, and I'm positive that he's very proud of the great job you're doing. And I thank you for that.
Well, thank you very much for that. I appreciate those kind words. But, you know, any success that I have, obviously, is attributable to the decisions and the assistance given to me by you folks and also the staff that I work with. You just, you can't have success in this business without good people around you. And that's why I mentioned it the last time I was here, my hat's off to our staff. You know, if I could, I thought about telling you some of the things that those folks endure on a daily basis, but I don't know that that's fit for public consumption. But they soldier on. And the last, Commissioner, you're correct. The year has been tough. Summer's been tough. The last few weeks have been difficult, and a lot of what we do takes place behind the confines of the walls of the Correctional Center, and that's just kind of the nature of the business. Nonetheless, it's worthy of note, because they don't get a lot of attention for the good things they do, the things that they put up with. And, you know, the behaviors that you see take place, camera view on the streets outside, they don't just cease and desist once those individuals are put into the custody of the Department of Corrections. They have to deal with a lot of things. And in order to deal with a lot of those behaviors, you have to have well-trained staff, and they are. You have to have very professional staff, and they are. And you have to have support from folks like you, and we do. So the thank yous go all the way around, and I'm just happy to be in a place to contribute what I can contribute and keep moving forward, keep our people safe, and keep the community safe. And the people don't think about that either. You know, these people have to go someplace after they're arrested. So our place in criminal justice system is critical, and we're a very important part of that system, although not much is mentioned about that. But we have to deal with these folks, and we have to keep the community safe. And I just told a friend of mine the other day, I said, "You sleep well last night?" He said, "You're welcome." You know, our people are doing a good job. And I take my hat off to them. So.
Commissioner Tusha, or I'm sorry, were you done, Mark?
Nope. I have a couple more things before the Commissioner can have at me. So, enclosure number six, admissions. We had 1,495 admissions and 1,533 releases for the month of August. Our ADP, or average daily population, is 1,119. U.S. Marshall population is up. ICE population is up. Felony pretrial population is up. Misdemeanor pretrial population decreased a bit, but not much, maybe two or three people. Female population is down. Third female housing unit is open. The behavior amongst that population is problematic, however. So it almost seems like the population is up, but we're dealing with that as well. Medical, during the last reporting period during the month of August, medical units switched over to IRMA, electronic medical records. So these numbers are going to be off just a bit as we make the transition from OMS database to the IRMA database. Intake screenings were 1,000, physical health assessments 471, discharge referrals are at 200 for the month. Initial psych assessments, 36. Initial mental health assessments, 96. Don't have a number of mental health infirmary placements. Again, that's a factor of transitioning from, pardon me, OMS to the new electronic medical records that CCS has got up and running. Referrals to community-based mental health services, outpatient psych, two. Mental health co-occurring disorder treatment programs, 12. Mental health therapy, four. Just a little bit on the Mental Health Summit that I've spoken to you about on previous occasions. We had a meeting on August 26 with the region to discuss the planning for the Mental Health Summit. Meeting went well. We're still planning for a late fall date, and we have another meeting, I believe it's next week, to continue working on plans for that summit, which, in light of the recent events, is all the more critical that we have that meeting and ensure that the appropriate stakeholders are in attendance.
Thank you.
That's all that I have, other than, you know, actually, I could probably take up the next couple of hours talking to you about the issues that we're dealing with, but I think I've capsulized what I've had to say pretty well. But let me end with this. Mental health, it's been all over the newspaper. We, I think we have a crack team. Denise is here to represent as well. Mike's also here, two LMHPs. I remember when I started, we had a psych doc, part-time, and one LMHP. And we have a part-time psych doc and four LMHPs. So, and we could probably use more. But we're doing, I think, quite well with what we have. I think the illustrations of problems with mental health in this community just in the last couple of weeks is quite good evidence of what I've been ranting about, if you will, at this podium for the last couple of years. And we continue to move forward. I'll say again, I think jail's not the place for the mentally ill, however, violent offenders, such as what we've collected here recently, is what we have to deal with, and that's what we're here for. But there's another component out there that we continue to deal with, and we're working with the other partners in the criminal justice community to respond to what is a very, and ever-changing landscape with regard to mental health. But I think we're doing a good job, and I'd like to publicly thank those other entities in the criminal justice group out there. And they know who they are, because they are at the Management Council meetings every month, that are helping us deal with this problem. So I just wanted to acknowledge that as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Tusha?
Good morning, Mark. First of all, I'd again like to thank Donna for her 30 years of service. I mean, you always, every time I see you, you have a smile on your face, and I tell you to put up with 30 years and the changes that have happened over the 30 years. I congratulate you. So thank you very much. Thank you. Mark, quick question. You know, and to what Commissioner Morgan had said, you know, it takes a special breed of people to do what they do in the corrections facilities. And kudos to them because of the fact that, especially the new recruits, I mean, they're coming in at a really, really rough time in our facilities there. And for them to still know what's going on and to stay there, I give them congratulations on that, because like I said, I appreciate everything everybody does, even though I give, you know, get on my little high horse a little bit about overtime and stuff every meeting. But I have to say, I really, really appreciate your staff and you and everybody, what they do, because like I said, that's a special breed of people, and that's above normally, because from what we hear and what we see, I don't know. I don't know if I could do that. So I want to thank everybody for that.
Thank you.
And I wish the new recruits good luck on everything.
Thank you.
Okay, on that note, on your staffing, I've got management and support. You're authorized at 21, and you only have 17. Do you have plans on filling those positions?
Yes, we do.
Okay, is that anytime soon, or?
It would be this fall.
This fall?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Second of all, on the overtime, and again, I understand it's gone down, it's gone way down, and then spiked up a little bit. And I know you've got the new recruits, but there was a comment on there. You got in there, "We will also increase correctional officer hiring to ensure average staff on hand is maintained at a level equal to average staff authorized." So with these new recruits, do you plan on hiring more to take care of this overtime?
I do. And we're losing two and a half staff a month. That's about what we, what we had trit out.
Is that through retirement, or is that just?
Individuals moving on to other jobs.
Okay, so...
And some unfortunate incidents, death, and retirement. So primarily, well, actually, this year, it's been all of the above. It's been death, it's been retirements, it's been people moving on to other professions. So it's a little bit of D, all of the above.
So you have the new recruits now that are almost ready to be off on their own.
Yes.
And then when will you start the process all over again, in the fall? Well, it actually is almost fall.
Actually, we have, from the posting that we did in the spring, we have a list that we can pull from, so we don't have to repost the whole thing. So we can go back to that list and pull from that existing hire list.
And how many are you looking at from that list?
You know, I want to get this recruit class out and up on the floors, and then five to 10, something like that.
Okay.
So that would take us into late fall, early spring, before we repost it.
And have, have all the recruits stayed on, or have you lost any?
Have not lost any.
God, that's awesome.
That is good. Particularly given, you know, some of them hit the floor right at the time. This other case broke, and they saw a lot. So they, it's baptism by fire. So they jumped right in.
Well, like I said, it takes a special breed of those people, and God, I really, really appreciate them. I really, really, and so does the community.
Thank you.
It really does. Because like you said, you know, keeping certain persons in there and, you know, watching over them to make sure they're not back out on the streets again. And even if they do get out on the streets, you know, we still keep the community safe as much as possible. So again, I appreciate that. Also, I want to make a comment. I noticed 11 individuals received their GED programs in August. That is awesome. That is fantastic.
That's very good, actually.
Isn't that great?
That program slowed down a little bit, but we kind of kicked it into high gear, so.
Is that the highest it's been?
Out of, I think it is.
Yeah.
I think it is.
Well, I want to say congratulations to those, both gentlemen and the women, because of the fact that 11 of them, that is just super. So hopefully, they can continue on and find some place to use those GEDs and maybe go on further on that with their education.
And that's a good task for the discharge planner, to make sure that once you do achieve that level of success, that you're linked to people on the outsides so that you can continue your success post-release from our facility. And that's a challenge for the discharge planner. It's a challenge for the case manager over in the Community Correctional Center. But I think they do a good job. And I was at a venue yesterday where people said, well, you know, why do you, why do you provide programming? They're just going to get out anyway. That's exactly why we provide the programming, because they are going to get out anyway.
It doesn't mean that they can't continue. Even with college, with, you know, a trade school or a college, GED is really nothing different than a graduation certificate. So I mean, they can go far with this, and it's better than not having one at all. So I congratulate them for all their hard work, and your teachers too, and your staff for helping them, you know, to get through this process. And they've got to feel really, really proud of themselves to do that.
It's a real self-confidence booster for them.
Yeah.
And that's an important launching pad for them once they release from our facility.
Especially if some of them come down and they feel like they're beaten down, and to be able to build up and then graduate, that is totally awesome.
Yes.
One other thing, you said the female, I see that you said the female population decreased and is inconsistent with prior year trends. Did you say the third housing unit is still open?
Third housing unit is still open.
And how many females over and above the second one before you have to open a third one?
Well, this month, it's not so much the population, it is the behavior within the population and the number of keep-separate inmates that we have now. And we had to open up a third housing unit just to keep a lot of different people separate from other co-defendants.
You know, and I've toured your place several times before, but when you have the two, and I don't want to say normal, but more, the two units where the females are at, and then you have this third one where you have behavior problems, is that next to the other two, or is it off someplace else where you don't have any issues with this?
H is in part of the 2B housing unit, so that's separate and apart, well, it's adjacent to, but separate and apart from 15F and 15R that you speak of.
Okay.
15F and 15R are right now are used to house females, and then H is adjacent to the 2C housing unit.
And with that, let's say, and I'm going to use, for instance, the third unit because of the fact that we're already talking about that, do you have to put separate correctional officers in that unit compared to the other two, or do they watch all three of them at the same time?
No, the separate officer in H.
Okay.
And then have officer in 15F and 15R, which are co-located. They're adjacent to each other. And it's just, they're right on the same, right in the same area, whereas H is down the hall to the left and to the back, so back wall, west side.
Okay. All right. That's all I have today. Thank you, my dear.
Okay.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes. And I want to add my congratulations, too, to the great family that's done so many good things for us at Corrections, or good people, the Frickys. And what I want to ask you about is something that we've brought up before, and so maybe if you're working on this, excuse me for forgetting. Several years ago, I asked the Director of Corrections to prepare kind of a snapshot of just a day and, you know, who's in the correctional facility. And it's not, it's a lot easier said than done. First of all, there are people in with multiple charges, so it isn't like someone's in there for shoplifting, and that's one shoplifting. It could be a lot of other things. But I've always, I've been very curious about who ends up in the Department of Corrections, and sometimes I'm really surprised at who gets sent there by the judges and for their offenses. So I... So I'd like to ask you, without, you know, devoting a month to it or something, but if you could do a snapshot of who's in there, and then report back to the county board, because I think we have some pretty low-level offenders in there at times, we have some very high-level offenders, obviously, too, but I'd like to see that. And that kind of ties in with what we're doing next Tuesday. I have a criminal justice meeting set up at the United Way office across the street, and we have a contract with United Way that performs placement of individuals who are referred by the judges directly by the courts. And I've said it many times, but Judge Lowe really leads the pack in assigning people to United Way, and what it does is, of course, it means that people are not going to the correctional facility, and not only is that a good thing, but because we're saving the money at the facility, but also, the good thing is that people who are minimal offenders are, you know, that, things that are not really, shouldn't be done at Corrections, that they're instead working at various jobs across, across the city, some hundred and some employers, as a matter of fact, are cooperating with this program. So it's, it's really a good side-by-side program running and very linked, very much linked with what you try to do as well. So if you could kind of give us a snapshot, and then next Tuesday, not that you won't have to have it that fast, but next Tuesday, if you and some members of your staff could participate in the meeting at United Way that's set for 11 o'clock, and the public is invited as well, across the street in the big boardroom, to talk about what they have done, what they would like to do, and how we can increase their activity. It's a very low fee, I think we're paying them less than $50,000 a year for that service, and it really is a great success story, but it is hand-in-hand in what you do at the correctional facility, so if we can just reduce your guest list, that's what I'd like to do.
Okay.
And I'd also like to look, though, too, and see who really is in the facility, and also, I asked you, if you will, too, sometimes there's some people in there who are in there for quite some time, and I, I'm very concerned about that, it almost looks like some attorney forgot they're there or something, I'm not sure what happened, why they're still sitting in there. So I'd like to have that information as well, and share that with the county board, too, some of the long-term guests, and what they're in there for, and maybe we can figure out why they haven't been, why they haven't been, why they haven't gotten their day in court.
Okay.
Okay. And I, I, again, I, I think this happens every time you come up, but I'm really impressed with the kind of work you do, and I get phone calls from the director when events happen, sometimes late at night, and I appreciate that kind of information, because I like to know what's going on and, and find out ways we can support what the department's trying to do. It has been one hell of a week for you, at least the last couple of weeks, and it's always difficult, but we read about it in the World Herald, we also had some personal accounts as well. So we just want to communicate to your staff that we support what you're doing, we support them, we're aware of the dangers that they face when they get their head butted and, and kicked and everything else. We know about it, and we care about it, and we're going to try to make them even more safe. Thank you.
And what I would add to that, too, is we had a morning briefing with the lieutenant, which we do once a week, and we talked about some additional safety precautions that we're going to put in place with some new come-alongs, and little policy changes, so things don't happen, and we say, well, boy, that's the nature of the job, rather, we take a look at those and see how, what changes we can make. And to be quite honest with you, a lot of that, a lot of the changes that we've made were coming right from the ground up, and we listen to a little patio out there on the, on the east side of Corrections, and that, when those shifts are changing, we're sitting out there, ready to come on shift, and we sit up and we talk about different things, and how are your nights going, and what do you think, and that's where some of these ideas, just, you kind of hang around out there and you talk to the staff, that are actually hands-on with some of the more problematic people, and you get some ideas, and you say, okay, well, let's go with that, or at least let's pilot it, let's try it. So I, it's important, too, to let you know that while unfortunate incidents happen, we review those incidents to determine how can we better keep our staff safe, and how can we better prevent a recurrence of a same or similar issue.
And there's one other comment I want to make that I hope is appropriate. I was planning on talking to you about, and to encouraging you to promote from within, I know you've got some promotions coming up, but I really want to do it publicly, that I believe strongly in promoting from within, I mean, you're one of the prime examples of someone who's been around the block and worked your way up, and I know in other, other positions in the facility, that's been true as well, and we see that with our chief administrative officer, and we see it with other people that we've moved up in positions, it, it really works well, and I think it encourages morale, and, and they're really smart people, and they're smiling back there now. They're getting ready to ask for a raise. No deal, but anyway. I would like to encourage you to do that, and, and promote in a way that creates other vacancies, so that other people can move up, and I want to ask you to do, consider that strongly publicly, I don't want to ask you that privately, I feel strongly about it, so I'd like to ask you publicly to give every good thought to promoting people that will create vacancies and then move people up, because it's, that's one way to really, I think, boost morale. I think that's a good thing to do.
Well, one of the things that we've done in the last few years is through the hiring process, the training process, through exposing individuals to different opportunities, it provides a better opportunity to promote from within, so I'm, I'm pretty happy that we can, we can take advantage of that.
Good. Well, thank you very much, you're doing a terrific job, and let your staff know we support them.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Mark, I just want to add to the, and, you know, it, it has been a tough year, and it's not just the events of what's occurred this last couple of weeks, but the loss that you've taken from, from, on employees.
Yeah.
That also has an impact, not only on your direct employees, but us as a board, and we, our hearts go out to you and your staff for that. So if there is anything that we can come up with to do to show our appreciation, I mean, that's, that, not a whole lot, but something is what we would like to come up with.
Okay, thank you.
You know, you bring up a good point, though, in terms of the community really not understanding or knowing what happens. You hear about what an individual has done, what the law enforcement has done to catch them and bring them to the correctional facility, but then that's it, you never hear what happens after that, and what not only staff indoors, but what it takes in order to house someone. And for the most part, we have a good, you know, smooth operation, but as you said, these last couple of weeks, we've had quite a few challenges. One of the things that I think we can work on coming up is our County Government Awareness Month, and I would like this year to really try to do some tours of community groups to have them understand more about what we do. And the correctional facility, I think, needs to really let our citizens know what happens behind those doors, what do we, what are we doing to, in order to keep them safe, what are we doing in order to know from the beginning of when they come in, that there is a possibility that they're going to go back out into our community, and how and what are we doing to make sure that we do what we can to ready them for that re-entry. Some may not agree with everything that we're doing, but, you know, I think they need to understand what we're doing and why we're doing it, and so maybe give that some thought that we can work on, this isn't until April, and I'm not quite sure yet what the theme is going to be, there's always a theme that National NACO comes out with, but we can, we can still do tours or, or community conversations with them about what our role is once they enter our system, because I think, again, people forget that once someone's arrested, no matter what jurisdiction it is, they fall upon us as our responsibility, and counties play a very, very important role. And so maybe give that some thought, and we can discuss further about what we could possibly do.
You know, actually, I have given that some thought, and maybe April will be a good rollout date, if you, if you like the concept, but law enforcement around the country, here and, and around the country, have initiated Citizen Academies, and it's an abbreviated academy where citizens go, and they go to the firearms range, and they ride in a cruiser, and they do night patrols, and, but they, they get an abbreviated exposure to what recruits and police departments and FBI go through. So that would be certainly a way to raise the level of awareness of what goes on inside a correctional facility, what officers are exposed to on a day-to-day basis, they tour at the facility, so I think about that, that's something that, that I've been kind of kicking around, but it kind of slips off, slips off the plate, but it certainly would be good, if you like the concept, to try to start that during the month of April.
I think that's an exceptional idea, and I know a lot of people who've gone through those academies, in fact, they also have one for the medical field, and they work, and it makes, again, it's just building that awareness, because people really, for whatever reason, they're, they're not engaged in what role we play in keeping our community safe. And so I, I really like that idea, so I'd be glad to work with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Again, thank you, and congratulations again to the Frickies, and I think that's it. Oh, Commissioner Boyle?
What I was going to suggest is that PBS and Nebraska Educational Television does some excellent stories on, right along this vein, we may, I think we ought to contact them, maybe Phil Rooney could do that for us, and contact them, see if they want to maybe follow a couple people through the system, see what happens, I think it'd be interesting, because people, we really, most of us don't have a clue about what happens when you get picked up for shoplifting, or you get some other, something happens, and then go through the whole system, and I think it'd be fascinating, it could be a good program, and it's something that, then that we would have a disc that we could use.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
You mentioned Nebraska TV, I was there yesterday in Lincoln to, to do an hour-and-a-half presentation to their, their OLE program.
Oh, yeah.
I can't remember the acronym, but it's, it's Adult Learners My Age and Beyond, actually. And, you know what, it was, it was a really good group, they were very receptive, and did an hour on, on overview of jails, and focused in on what we do, very well received, lots of questions, and I think that's probably a pretty good model for, Dan Wheeler was my contact down there, I think that's probably a pretty good model for what we may want to do in, in the fall, in April, and what we can work with Phil Rooney on, too, so.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your help.
With that, we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion passes.
We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Craft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here, item A approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, August 27, 2013. Item B approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, September 10, 2013, and that includes item C for the 2 dot com expenditures.
After approval, item C.
So, seconds.
Any questions or comments?
Commissioner Craft? Motion passes.
Consent agenda, there's a total of 20 items, A through T.
Motion approved.
Any questions or comments, or Commissioner Boyle?
I think I'd like to at least have a separate vote on H and I.
H and I?
Yes.
Okay, with that, is there, the motion and the second are okay with pulling H and I? Okay? So motion is to approve consent agenda minus H and I.
Motion passes.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Boyle, H?
Yes, the reason that I like to talk about these separately is that they are, I think, well, they're items I think that the citizens need to have a little bit more information on, rather than being in the consent agenda where we go through things that are fairly routine. Item H is a court-ordered, payment of court-ordered costs, and I've been going through the money we've been spending, so I was distracted a little bit, but I would like to, on that item, on H, excuse me for delay, this is a...
I don't know if you'll get the...
What?
I don't know for sure, I'm going to hand you H and I, because there was some trouble, I thought, with attachments on the website.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's see, H was, thank you, H was a person named Disney, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and it's, I think it's kind of a, it looks like it wasn't a lot of money, but I was, I just wanted it just brought up separately, so that we can know that we're, excuse me, we're paying a, a person who sued the county, and that we're paying them $911.79. I just think that we should be on the record that way, and so I'll make the motion to approve payment.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Motion passes.
Item I is one that is the result of the Kofold incident in Cass County, and again, it's, the county attorney did an excellent job in handling this, in my estimation, really terrific, and I'm not going to offer any other change or any amendment to it, which I originally had planned, I'm not going to do that, I'm going to instead just mention that the settlement was $75,000, and is, I guess I would classify it, classify it in the miracle status, so I would make a motion that we approve this, but again, it's a, we have been sued by a person, and we're paying $75,000 to settle the case.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
We'll move to citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the public hearing, there's one, a hearing to set the final tax rate for 2013-14, Mr. Joe Lorenz, our Director of Budget and Finance.
Yeah, this is just an amendment to put into effect the tax rate that was inherent in the budget that was adopted.
Any questions or comments from anyone, from the public?
Good morning, Commissioners, Jeff Stevens, 14518 Webster Circle, Nebraska's for, for tax-free and volunteer, and I'd like to thank the Board for the openness of the budget process, I think that's just very commendable as public officials, that you allow so much public access during that process, and we look forward to working with you again next year, so, thank you.
Jeff, I did see Doug last night at a meeting, but wanted to let you know that we haven't forgotten the response to your white paper. Staff right now is gathering information and input from our department directors and office holders to what issues pertain to their areas, and then we'll compile the responses and then get together with you, so that hasn't been forgotten.
That's great, and I, and I appreciate that. Doug gave me a heads-up email last night, and when that's complete, he'd like me to distribute that to the other people on our team.
Yep, yep.
And again, thank you very much.
Well, and, and that goes both ways, I mean, we thank you for the time, I mean, we, we have been engaged not only with your group on budget issues, but with, she left now, but Laura McCormick, and Brenda Vasek, and Von Crowell, Melanie Smith Smotherland, on issues that have to pertain with our juvenile issues, and court issues, and truancy issues, and your input is valuable to us, and so we appreciate the time that you all have taken to be in attendance with our meetings, and then our committee meetings as well, so that goes both ways.
We're glad to hear that, glad to hear that, thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing on the final tax rate? And if I could just remind everyone, Joe, this is the, is it 1.6?
A 1.6 cent increase, yes.
And again, that was through our budgeting process. And so, again, anyone else wishing to speak? We can close the public hearing on this and take action. I will say ahead of time that I plan not to vote for this, as I did not vote for our budget, so I will not be voting to increase our mill levy. Does anyone else have any questions or comments before I close the public hearing? Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry, Tusha?
Claire. I'm just not very good at buttons. I'm just curious on the library rate. I'm not seeing what it was a year ago. I'm just wondering what is the change in the library rate from last year?
The library rate last year was 1.516, and this year it's increasing to 2.734. And that's driven by the formula in the inter-local agreement with the city of Omaha based on per capita spending. And changes that the, there was a slight increase in the amount of people, registered voters, in non-incorporated Douglas County.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Tusha?
Dan, I also will not be voting for the increase. I don't agree with it. As many of you know, I also did not vote for the budget increase. I did not agree with that. So I just can't see voting for an increase when I didn't vote for the budget. So again, I will not be voting for this increase. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I am going to be voting to support it. I did vote to increase the spending. It was something I didn't want to do, but it's something that I felt we had to do. I felt it was responsible. So after I saw the votes lining up the way they were, I realized that I had better step up to the plate. But that doesn't mean, I think what I feel like I earned, excuse me, it doesn't mean that I'm going to do it again next year. I think what I earned from all of you, you didn't know this, but as an IOU, I want you to seriously consider some cuts that I'll be bringing forward that have not been accepted for years. But I think there are cuts that we can make other places so that this does not have to happen. But this year, I couldn't convince really any of you, so, but I'm going to keep trying. And hopefully, if we can get some cuts that really don't really hurt people into place, cut some spending, I think we could, next year, hopefully, well, this year, we could have definitely got by without a tax increase. And next year, maybe not, but still, the cuts should be made. So I'll be making those suggestions once again. But I think it's, for my part, I just felt that I had to do it, and it's not something that I relished, but I am going to be voting to support this mill levy.
And Mike, just if I can have a conversation with you. My vote in no way is against those who voted for that.
I understand.
We did a tremendous amount of work on our budget.
Right.
And I respect where everybody landed. There were just things, as you just said, that people did not support in order to make those additional cuts.
Right.
And so it's not that I'm angry or slamming or anything. It's, I respect where you are with it, and it is what it is, and we will continue to work. I'm hoping that when we do our strategic planning...
Yes.
That are, that we can really seriously talk about those things and our priorities and start setting priorities better, which I think will help us through the budgeting process. So I just wanted you to know that.
Great. Well, I'd like to add this, too. I think we've been on, most of us have been on the board for a while. And I am really happy with the way this board works. I think to the people who view us, and I think to the elected officials and department heads, what you see is what you get. We really don't have any deep-seated rivalries, except for trying to get to that one parking spot in the morning. But we don't have any, we don't have any big rivalries. We're all working, I think, for, I know we are, for the betterment of the community. So because we have differences is what it's all about. So I don't take any of this personally. I appreciate your comments. And I support the strategic planning. I think that's a great idea. And we also have one from the taxpayers' group that we need to be talking about seriously as well. So Jeff can take that back home and say that that's on the radar screen, too.
Yep. Very good.
Thanks.
Commissioner Craft?
And I'll join, oops, yeah, I'll join Commissioner Boyle in saying that I feel it's the fiscally responsible and truth in budgeting, two things I'm very strong on. If we're not fiscally responsible, and that includes the tough decisions of raising taxes sometimes, we're not doing our duty. And truth in budgeting requires an increase in taxes. We could have done like some other government entities and falsified how much we think is going to be coming in, that they call it estimates, estimates. Our lowball some of our expenditures like we've done in the past for the courts. And I think we, very honestly, I think we've done some of that, but not to the severity we have in the past. And I believe we can come out clean on this one, provided we do raise the tax to 1.6 cents. So I am firmly in support of it because it's a fiscally responsible thing to do, and it is truth in budgeting. Thank you.
Commissioner Tusha?
Also, Jeff, I agree with you when you said you appreciate the budget process being open. I, too, I know it was a long process, but I think it's important that everybody realizes what we do through the budget process. And I, and again, like I said, I know it's a long process, but I'd rather it be out in the open instead of behind closed doors. Unfortunately, some of the meetings lasted longer and it were, you know, it wasn't on camera, but for the most part, it was. And I like this, and I hope we continue with this in the future. And as far as Commissioner Boyle said, I also, you know, agree with the strategic planning, but with your ideas, I hope we don't wait to the last minute again, like we always do. Every year, we wait to the 11th hour before we bring these cuts. Let's start looking at these cuts now and have some serious discussions on them, and so that way we'll be ready for it by the budget season.
I'll resurrect him, Senator, this afternoon.
Yeah. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Well, why I had requested to speak is, my thought is, sometimes in November, December, it gets a little quieter after some of the other legislative matters will have that breakfast. But I might suggest that we maybe have some budget discussions in December. Our board meetings are usually shorter. I'd request of Joe Lorenz that we consider doing that and have a couple preliminary budgets, kind of look at things, and maybe put some of those on the table and make that an open meeting. Where some of the taxpayer group, Lauren, League of Women Voters, and others who attended most of those would be welcome, and we'll give you the date if our chairperson thinks that's a good idea. And Claire, you're okay with that. If it works out, we could pick a couple of those times. And if we have to do it on another day, a Monday or something, Joe, you and I can discuss that with Claire and move ahead and let the chairperson make the final decision.
You know, PJ, one of the things that I would like, and I was going to talk about it for the finance chairs to look at, is I think it would be worth, we get our report, you know, our finance report every week in our book. But I think if we would have our chief financial officer on maybe a quarterly basis do a PowerPoint presentation for us at the board meeting to show where we are. You know, here's where we're supposed to be, here's where we are, here's what the trends are, here's what we're seeing, so that we talk about it throughout that whole fiscal year rather than just at the start of our budget time. So again, you know, maybe that can tie into, you know, having that be brought up as we're planning these budget meetings to figure out how we can have our, what kind of presentation our finance director can give us on a quarterly basis.
That's a great idea. And Commissioner, or County Clerk Kavanaugh, I'd suggest that you might want to participate and make some suggestions to us. I know Kathleen Hall did about the World Herald, some other items that were brought up. We'll make sure that you're included in those meetings. And, you know, we'll welcome some candid, blunt suggestions to the commissioners of what's going on in that meeting.
Here rather than in the media.
That'd be better to hear it than sometimes watching it on the news.
We've heard it before.
And Alan, you're also welcome to participate if you have something. You observe us every week.
Commissioner Boyle?
You'll do. Ms. McCormick?
My, sorry, Laura McCormick, 336 Beverly. My comment would be, I would appreciate it if there would be a way that there could be more discussion about the grant expenditures and more transparency in terms of where we're at with some of these grants, particularly given LB561, and I, that's millions of dollars. I think it would help citizens if during the period of these grants, there is greater transparency and some type of information. I believe there's some type of grant hearings or discussions, and to my knowledge, they're not public. I don't know. I'm definitely a citizen who would be interested in some of those topics, and maybe there are others.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
What, thank you. What I was going to suggest was something that I sent to, you know, Commissioner, the Chair, and possibly to the finance director, Joe Lorenz. I've been looking at these budgets, and I've been thinking, you know, maybe what we ought to consider is some of the costs that we have, even as the sheriff's budget went past me just a few minutes ago. You look at court security, and you look at security on entrance to the building, I think we do that with the contract with the building commission. But we pay, I'm not really sure how that's taking place. But I'm wondering whether, in line with Mr. Craft's truth in budgeting, whether some of these expenses that are related directly to the courts should be moved to the courts so that their budget would go up by the expenditures, by the money that we have to spend because they're here and we're mandated to pay that, rather than having it be in some kind of, you know, it's in another budget, doesn't really show the true cost of operating the court system. So I'm going to be, I'm going to be asking to do some of those things with every, every kind of expenditure that I see that really is in a budget that ought to be attributed to somebody else who's really spending it, because then it puts them in the position of, that's their budget. They have to, you know, have to buy into it. I don't know what effect it'll have, but who knows?
I think that's worth the discussion. What I am a little bit reluctant on is the courts not, at this point, not all of them, but juvenile court has not been real receptive to sit down with us and talk about expenditures on an ongoing basis. And so I do worry about that a little bit.
Okay.
But definitely worth looking into how we can get to that issue.
Okay.
So, yeah, we can definitely talk about it.
Thanks.
Okay. Oh, Commissioner Duda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since we do not have the full board present today, I did not realize that Commissioner Rogers was not going to be here. I'm not sure that he realized he wasn't going to be here. I would like to ask if you would consider leaving the public hearing open for a week until we can have the full board present.
Sure.
If we don't close the public hearing, we don't have to advertise it again.
Yep. I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
With that, anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing? If not, this will be on, carried over to next week's agenda? With that, we will move to the committees, the first one being the Finance Committee.
And I think, as presented, is all I'd want to say unless, Joe, is there anything you want to comment on? Fine.
Next is the Administrative Services, and there's two items there for Commissioner Tusha.
Okay. Thank you. The first one is feedback from Douglas County employees on the tobacco-free campus policy. And I have Adi Por, who is going to give a slide presentation on this issue. Thank you.
No slide presentation. Good morning. This is Adi Por, Douglas County Health Department. I just, I send you a document that we put together after we put the draft tobacco-free policy on the Internet and asked employees to respond to it. So what we got were 22 employees who were in support of the policy and 20 who were against the policy, plus a letter from DCYC with 36 signatures on it. Let me just put them in a group, kind of the positives. People felt that they didn't have to walk through smoke, it should be expanded to all Douglas County employees. Eighty percent of Douglas County employees are non-smokers, and that actually spills over to the community. We have 80% of the community in Douglas County who are non-smokers, so 20% are smokers at this time. They were thinking that this is an example of health, and one of the comments was, everybody will get over it. So those were the positive comments. On the negative side, we kind of grouped them together. Some of them felt this was discrimination, this was a violation of their rights. E-cigarettes should not be included in the tobacco-free policy. What about other health issues like vending machines and so on? And some suggestions that we should have designated smoking areas. So you can see, I think what we would expect is what we saw. What I want to bring back to you is, let us go back and say what the overall goal really was when we started this discussion. And it was due to the fact that tobacco is the leading preventable cause of death. It's not any, but anything else. Tobacco is the leading cause of preventable death. Healthier employees provide lower healthcare costs, indirectly, lower absenteeism, and as a county health department, I would like to think that we should be an example for the entire community. And of course, as you know, there are, most of the hospital systems who are smoke-free at this time, meaning their property is smoke-free also. There are many large employers in the community who are smoke-free, Mutual of Omaha, Union Pacific. So it's not like we are a renegade out there. We have examples in this community where many employees already have to really comply to that. But what I want to discuss with you today are potentially some options that we could look at. One of the options, of course, is we do nothing. I don't think that is a satisfactory option at this time. And the reason for it is that we do have a lot of employees who are interested in this policy. Furthermore, we talked about, should we do prohibit smoking like 20 feet away from the entrance? So people would need to stay away from the entrance, because that's a lot of the complaints people have to walk in through people standing there with a smoking cigarette. I have thought about this pretty hard, and I can tell you, it's very difficult to enforce. Also, around our building, I wouldn't know where we would put the lines out there. So that's something to consider. It also gives somehow a bad image when you have people out there next to the parking lot, sitting in groups, smoking just when people enter the building. We could do smoking in designated areas only, and we have some example, Douglas County Health Center has that. The one thing we would need to consider, there potentially would be a cost to build these designated areas because potentially we would need to have some shelter over them. So, but I think it's better than the 20 foot away from the building, but the cost is an issue. We could have, again, a tobacco-free policy on the entire Midtown campus, as we really had set out to do. Would be a clear message to employees, no cost of implementation, but we now know that it requires negotiations with the unions to make that change. So the option I'm wanting you to consider seriously is to make it a tobacco-free policy only around the Midtown building where the Douglas County Health Department is at this time, and use this potentially as a pilot. County Health Department is at this time, and use this potentially as a pilot. And I would propose that we would give the employees a six-months period where we kind of would work out all the issues around it. It would give us time to talk to the unions, to do some bargaining with them around this. The Health Department has two unions, so we are in discussion and in negotiations with those at this time, so it's a perfect time to do it. I think it would fit well with the Health Department being in that building, because we do have a lot of people from the community who come to meetings to our building, meetings with the Health Department. So it does have that issue around it. I can tell you, there isn't a week goes by when not an employee says, when are we going to have a smoke-free policy around this building? So I think you have a lot going in that direction. And again, we could learn from what we are seeing there and then expand it further. Or in six months, if we see we are not getting there with the union, we could say, well, it's not the right time to do it. But I would be hesitant to, at this time, just put it aside and say there are too many barriers. I, I am a person, you know, if there are barriers, let's see what we can do about them and get through them. If Union Pacific and Mutual of Omaha can do it, we should be able to accomplish it at least around one building and the parking lots that are around that building. That's kind of my plea with you today. I would like you to discuss, give me some feedback on it, and then I would work with Carlos to kind of move forward on this.
Commissioner Boyle?
First, I appreciate all the work that you've done on this and gathering the information. One of the points I would like to make about Mutual of Omaha and Union Pacific, I don't know if they have a unionized workforce in those buildings. They do obviously other places, but I'm not sure they're, the office workers are unionized. So I think it's pretty much, the way it works there is, this is what we're doing. So I think that's the difference. I could be wrong. I'm curious about, and you did offer a solution that kind of threw me off a little bit, because I had another comment, but I'll still make it later. What are the unions saying to you about, what is their objection?
We have not discussed it with any of the unions yet.
Oh, you haven't?
No.
Okay. Well, my thought is that I'm, I don't smoke anymore, but it's not by choice. I had a heart attack when I was 40, and had to quit. So I, and I still want a cigarette. I could start right now if it was legal. I'd light one up right here. So I told my dad that if I live to be 70, which I am next January, I was going to start smoking with both hands. And he asked me not to, so I won't. But anyway, the deal is, smoking is such a god-awful addiction. I mean, it's, it is awful. And I have sons who smoke, and a couple of them have quit, which is great, and one who still smokes. And I never say anything to them. I mean, I, I'm not lecturing them. They know, he knows, and they know the health hazards. I just don't want to nag, because it is not, actually, I don't think they're smoking because of choice. I think it's, it's become such a terrible habit. The nicotine is awful. It's a real, real addictive drug, you know. So I'm concerned about people who are still heavily addicted. Most of them are, if they're smoking, even lightly. And I, I think what we ought to be doing is, as they do at some other places, I've seen it, maybe they don't have it anymore at UMC, but they used to have a kind of a shed off to the side of the parking area for the, as you went into the outpatient area, that driveway with that LA parking. And they had an area there that I thought people could go smoke. And I think that is the solution. I think we should have a place far away, but close enough, in the parking area, for example, not, not in, not an area where people are walking by all the time, someplace off, and maybe with some good ventilation, don't have it all closed up. Have to do something in the winter time. But that's where people could smoke. And I know there's complaints from people who don't smoke about so-and-so is getting so much time off for going to smoke, and I should get a break if they get one and all that. That's a whole nother problem. But I guess the bottom, my bottom line is that I don't think we should ban smoking on the campus. I think we should encourage people not to smoke. We should offer a place for people who are addicted to continue smoking. And the other issue that comes into play is residents of the Health Center. Many times, that's about the last thing they have left to enjoy, is a cigarette. And so I think we need to accommodate people who are toward the end of their life, and even if they aren't, if they're in that facility, I'd like to see them accommodated where they can smoke. I think that's part of, part of their well-being, if you will. Sounds kind of contradictory, but I think it's part of their well-being. And I also wonder whether people who are in that facility are allowed to use alcohol. You know, many times, no.
Not in the facility. If they leave, they can.
Well, when I was helping with my dad's care, he died when he was 92, his doctor at Creighton, who's an Irishman and a boxer of all things, former boxer, told me that dad should not drink. And I said, you have got to be joking. And he said, no, he really shouldn't. Well, he was 89 years old. And so I stopped and got him some beer on the way home. And he continued to drink and lived to be 92. We had a big beer party on his 90th birthday up in La Shera. So I mean, the point is, I think it's part of healing and living. So I just, I haven't, I have a real problem with clamping down on people when they need this. So that's where I am.
Well, just a few comments, and that's why I thought, you know, it may be easier just to do it around the building that the Health Department is in.
Right.
So it would not affect residents. We also now know that under CMS, there is really a regulation that we need to have a designated smoking area for long-term care residents.
Okay.
So that designated area already, we put that in the plan. The other thing I only wanted to include, too, there is a lot of discussion about e-cigarettes. And, you know, if you want to be a purist, you probably would say at this time, e-cigarettes would be included, too. I don't think at this time, we have the scientific facts that they should be included. So I would propose that we probably wouldn't include them. I also thought it was interesting, you know, everybody does their own little research. And so I did my research before I came here on the web to see, you know, which counties, for example, do not allow tobacco smoking on their properties. The one that struck me was Hennepin County, which is Minneapolis. It's a large county, and it is, and I thought I should, I should have brought you some. I mean, the commissioners were so proud that they were able to make all their county properties smoke-free, include the correction facilities. So, you know, there are a lot of people who are able to accomplish that. And I think we always are kind of a to-do, have this to-do mentality, too, here in the Midwest. So I do think we can accomplish it. I agree with you absolutely. It won't be easy. Now, the designated smoking area is something that I brought up, but again, there is a little bit of cost involved with it, because you would need to have it covered. But that would be a first step, too. Let's say we just would put one designated area for visitors and for employees to gather on, around our building. At this time, I'm not willing to speak for the other directors who are in other departments. Just for the department in the building we are in, our four directors, we all are one voice at this time. And we also think that our employee, this is really what, what they want. But I'm not going to tell the Douglas County Health Center what they should do at this time. So I'm, I'm going back to how we started out, being small, trying it as a pilot. If it goes well, the decision, you may want to make the decision that this should be larger.
Commissioner Tusha?
Good morning. Thank you.
Good morning.
I am also a reform smoker. It's been about 20 years since I quit smoking. But I'll tell you, there are some days I would kill for a cigarette. And, you know, I mean, you just, some people lose that craving, but I never have. It took me three times before I finally quit smoking, but I did. But like I said, if you had one, I'd be sitting there puffing away with you there, Mike. Adi, I appreciate you coming back with a different proposal. I really do. At least you're trying to, you know, work because of the comments of everybody. I'm not saying don't do nothing, you know, but I am, I personally don't agree that you should take it away 100%. I don't agree with the parking lot and that there are personal vehicles. But if you want to make it, you know, 20, 30 feet away from the building, then you could park, you know, in your vehicle and smoke. You know, I'd go with something like that. As far as, when you have the main entrances and you see all these people out there, it's, it's not only that you have to work through the smoke, it doesn't look very nice with, you know, whether employees or visitors or whoever, it just doesn't look right. So maybe an option is to either put it on the side of the building, away from the public, or behind a building, you know, to, to put it something. And, you know, if they have to walk a couple of feet to have a cigarette, you will, believe me. If you want a cigarette that bad, you will walk the couple of feet. So again, I appreciate what you're doing. I really do. And I appreciate you coming back. But I just, personally, I can't see cutting it out completely. But I do agree with not the main entrances. I just don't think that puts, you know, very nice on, on any, any building or whatever. But again, and maybe we could put them off to the side. And I'm not saying bury them, but I'm just saying away from the entrance, and maybe 20, 30 feet if you want to do it in your vehicle. And so, again, I, I think...
So are you saying designated area, or are you saying...
You know, if they want to smoke in their vehicle, it has, maybe we say 30 feet, your vehicle has to be 20 to 30 feet, or whatever you choose to do. Let's say 30 feet away from the entrance, then you can smoke in your vehicle. And if you don't want to go to your vehicle, if you want to smoke outside, we'll have a designated area, but definitely not in front of any of the entrances, or even on the side of any entrances, but maybe on the side or in the back someplace away from where people come and go at.
We could, we could try it, you know.
And I like your idea of the six-months trial. I like that, you know.
We could try some posting. I don't know how, how successful it will be, but you know, we never know if we don't try. So we could put some posting, say, no smoking in front of the front entrance. The same thing on the back. It is, we could say, only smoking on the parking lots.
Yeah, you know, so many feet away. But you know what? I think, means you're willing to compromise a little bit. I think you'll find that most people say, well, they, they went from this real strict, and now they're compromising. So I'll compromise, too. And I won't smoke in front of the entrance. I'll go off to the side. So, you know, it may work both ways. But I do like your trial period of six months to see how it'll work and, and to be a pilot. I appreciate that also.
What, what I don't know, and why I said the six months, is I'm not sure that not even the 20 feet away from the entrance, we wouldn't have to have a discussion with bargaining units.
Yeah.
And it's going to take us some time to have those discussions.
Yeah.
So that's, that's an issue. And that's why I thought kind of the six months, you give employees some time to think about it. How would I handle it if I really need that cigarette? Would I, where would I go? How would I still smoke? So you are not abruptly from one day to the other, say, well, this is what we are going to implement.
But even with the bargaining unit, I mean, we're not, if we do this, we're not saying you can't smoke on the property whatsoever. We're just offering a compromise and asking everybody to compromise back. So I mean, it's something that we have to work out. But again, I want to thank you for the compromise on this, from going strictly. And I totally agree, inside the facility, absolutely not.
Oh, there's no question.
I totally agree with that. But I think we can maybe move them around a little bit and go from there. And I thank you for your compromise.
Commissioner Kraft?
I don't think there's anybody in the city who doesn't know my stance on smoking. And when we proposed it, when I was on the Omaha City Council, the bar owners and restaurant owners were largely against it. And now I get people coming up and saying, boy, I apologize for the things I said. It's been good for business. It's been good for my employees. I don't have as many sick days. My employees don't come in. And their kids are healthier, one of them said. My kids are healthier, because I don't come home smelling like smoke. And it's been shown that just hanging up a smoky jacket in a house can affect infants, where their capillaries are, which are so tiny around the heart, contract. And it is suspected by some people that SIDS, or sudden infant death, may be related to smoking or tobacco. That it is the right thing to do. The e-cigarettes, I would encourage us not to accept them, because we don't know about them yet. And they help, they don't help getting off tobacco, from what I understand. But when they can get a young person onto it, it starts the craving, and it starts the addiction. There's also been, and I haven't done research since 2005, when I was no longer on the city council. But the dual addiction, once you're addicted to cigarettes, you're more likely to become addicted to something else. And whether it is gambling, whether it is alcohol, whether it is marijuana or heroin, the dual addiction aspect, once you get addicted on one thing, it's a lot easier to get addicted to something else. Am I correct? Do you, do you, have you read that?
Well, an addictive personality is addicted to many different things.
Right.
You know.
So I would encourage a total ban on all county property if we could, but I realize that's not practical at the moment. But I will accept whatever we can get, so long as we have good consensus on it. And I would definitely ban cigar-smoking, Claire?
Can I, can I...
I'm done.
Commissioner Duda?
Well, there was the idea of cigar-smoking. I, I like this approach better. I want to thank you for it. I think this is a more reasonable approach. I appreciate, I was going to ask where the other directors are within your building, and you say you're all together on the same page. I appreciate knowing that. I think this is a much more reasonable approach. I personally would still like to see a designated smoking area somewhere out of the way, you know, unobtrusive. But I, I think that would be better. And unlike my, my friend, Commissioner Kraft, I appreciate the e-cigarettes not being lumped in. If we do, because of this action, if this encourages some employees to try to quit smoking, and they feel that e-cigarettes would be a tool to help them in that effort, I would like, like to see us allow them to, to make that effort. So I think this is a much more reasonable approach, and I appreciate your taking it. Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft?
You know how to get the hair on the back of my neck, don't you?
[laughing]
Regarding the e-cigarettes.
[laughing]
E-cigarettes, yeah. We, through the Healthy Living and through our Human Resource Department, the Benefits Department, are going to be providing smoking cessation classes to go along with this. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I understood. Having the e-cigarettes is an incentive not to take those classes and not to make those attempts to stop. It doesn't, it hasn't been shown to help stopping.
Okay.
But it's been shown that it does stop the attempt to stop. Does that make sense? Okay, thank you.
For you.
For me?
I've kind of come full circle on this, and, and I'll tell you why. Someone made a comment, and I don't know if it was Commissioner Duda last time around on this conversation, but someone made a comment about government intruding on our lives. And while I am, and happen, and will continue to be very passionate about public health issues, there comes a point in time where, is it really our role to intrude on individuals' lives that, I mean, this is a legal substance we're talking about? And should we not be spending more time and energy on things that are illegal, or bigger problems than this? And so I think the compromise is good. I mean, I think I mentioned that, you know, putting signage may not be the end-all-be-all, but I think putting it out there. When we were down in Fort Worth for the NACO conference, I was able to take a tour of one of their health facility, largest public health facility in the area. And they, we talked about smoking, and they talked about the ban. And it's kind of like we are. We ban it within our buildings and, you know, so forth and so on. And they have signs, but there are those who will walk up to the door and put their cigarette out right there at the door, even though the sign's there. So I know it's not an end-all-be-all, but... But what they did was, they employed an individual that was, they partnered with their developmentally-disabled department, and that's what he does all day, is pick up the cigarettes and greets the people. And this individual is loved like no other. I mean, he is the, he has a smile on his face greeting every single person that comes into that hospital, all, through all seasons, all weather. And so it was kind of interesting to me, but anyway, that's kind of off the subject, but it, it, there was a sign, they did have designated areas, and I think through all of this conversation we've been having with the truancy issue, and the intrusion of government in families' lives, it just hit me, when, I, I, I don't know if it was you or who made the comment, but it just hit me that, that, that's kind of what we're doing here. I mean, I'm, I'm a reformed smoker, I don't smoke anymore, I know it's bad for my health, or knew it was bad for my health, but I actually had a doctor who told me to chew on the gum or take the lozenges for the rest of my life, because nicotine is not what's going to hurt you, it's everything else that's in the cigarettes, it's not the nicotine. And so nicotine is the addictive piece, but it's not going to hurt your health. And so it was like, hmm, well, anyway, we can offer those things to employees, and we know, all the public health discussions is, this is behavior change, and we cannot force that upon people, we can give them the tools and the information that they need to know what choice they need to make, but it's up to them to make that choice. I think that we do have to do whatever we can to keep it away from the entries of our buildings, no matter what building it is, I completely agree with that, because everybody has a right. The smoker has a right to smoke, but the people who don't smoke have a right to walk through a clean airway into our buildings. And so I think if we did two things, and that was, put the signs up, I think we could put them up in every building, that's not against anything, just put it out, you can't smoke within 100 feet of our door. And is there going to be an enforcement piece of an issue? Yes, but we can still put it up there and try. But then for the designated areas, I mean, we have one at the Health Center, it's out of sight, out of mind, for most of us, that when we started this conversation, it was like we forgot that it was there, we knew the resident one was there, but the employee one is there, and people kind of said, oh, yeah, yeah, well, you never see it. I mean, we see it during our Board of Trustees meeting, but the public doesn't see it, nobody sees it. And so I've kind of taken a, a little bit, I think, again, if we give them the tools, if we put into place a designated area for whatever building it is we're talking about, post the signs, and just see if there's more willingness for individuals, you know, to take it upon themselves, instead of us intruding on them. And again, you know, if it was an illegal substance, you know, maybe we would have a stronger position, but strong-arming, I kind of looked at it as, and I don't want to do that. Vending machines, if we had regular vending machines and one healthy one, I think we should move towards that. Everybody has a choice. So again, I think the compromise is good to start with, I think we continue to provide them with the information of why it's not good for their health, why it's not good for them to smoke and their productivity, and all of that information, but that we back off a little bit, and let them make the choice.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And so with that, I think if you would work with, coming up with a plan on how to, maybe Jerry Leahy can be involved in the signage piece of it, and again, I think it could be on all of our buildings, not just your building, walking into the Health Center, I know people smoke right outside that door, I think if we moved them a little bit farther, I don't think it would be a problem. So if we could work on signage, and then come back and say, this is where we're going to place the signs, and then the designated areas, maybe look and see what we're going to be faced with in implementing that in different areas.
How about we make your proposal on that?
Yep.
Signage and probably a designated area per building-
Right.
So that staff has a place to go-
Right.
To, and the cost that, what it would entail.
Right, yep. Okay, thanks, I-
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second item on the Administrative Services is the Discussion Action Regarding the Douglas County Seal Identity Standards and Guidelines, Commissioner Tusha?
Thank you. Okay, we did approve our seal back in June 11th, but it, thanks to Commissioner Borgeson, it came to our attention that we needed standards and guidelines on what to use the seal for and how to use it. So with Commissioner Borgeson and Marcos San Martin, I'll tell you, he's been a godsend, I, I've made so many changes and additions, and didn't like this and didn't like that, so thank you, Marcos, for putting together this document. And basically what this document is, again, is, it'll be on the website, it's an official seal identity standard and guidelines. This will be the policy and procedures on how to use our new Douglas County seal, this will be for all the county department, elected officials, and any outside contractors that need to use our seal. The, the guidelines and the seals, we will have, we have blue and white, metallic gold and white, black and white, we have a full color seal, and we have a seal for the phone app, and we have a reverse blue on white, so if anybody wants to use it for posters or banners or anything like that. This will be on the website, we will have a JPG and a PNG files for people to use, because some prefer some over the others. We are also working on a, a vector file, which people will be able to ask the Administrative Office for this file for larger items such as posters or banners, and if, now, if there's no problems with this guidelines after discussion, we'll approve this today, and then our new seal will be up and running for anyone's use.
Do you want to-
Go ahead.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Douglas County Official Seal Identity Standard and Guidelines, along with the resolution that's being brought here today.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yeah, this is one of the backup documents I did not read, unfortunately.
Shame on you, because I put it out there.
I, I have a number of questions. First of all, I'm going to go back to my days on the city council. The City of Omaha seal, you have to, to use it, you have to get permission from the city clerk, Buster Brown. So when the, Omaha Sister Cities wanted to incorporate the City of Omaha seal in our publications, we needed approval. So are we giving Cart Blanc approval to anybody? Is that in there?
Yes, it does say that they have to, the contractor-
Okay, good.
Has to request, and then they are given the guidelines on how to use it.
The contractor, does it include-
Or whoever.
Or whoever, okay. Second is, are we going to get rid of everything all at once, are we going to slowly phase it in?
Phase it in.
Thank you very much.
We're going to phase it in, we don't want anybody to, just because we have a new seal out there, we don't want to have anybody, go ahead and put out more costs-
Good.
To have a new seal. They use currently what they have, and then they can incorporate the new seal.
And when we go back and redo the seal behind us?
That's being done through the Building Commission, that's in the process of being worked on right now.
And I assume they're using Cornhusker Industries?
No, they're not, no, they're not.
I don't know.
Because they could have done, they can do it. Cornhusker Industries used to be known as Prison Industries, okay, just want to make sure.
No, and-
I don't, we use Cornhusker Industries for a lot of furniture, wherever we can, we do buy from them, I do not know where we're getting the seal from.
I believe it's metal logos, but don't quote me on that, I have to look it up for sure.
Well, when we were in, where did we have Nebraska Association of Counties, was that Carney? And when we were in Carney, Prison Industries had, or Cornhusker Industries, excuse me, had a display, and they do seals like that. They have a laser cutter, so they can cut through the metal, the wood, whatever, and they showed me examples of some really wonderful ones. So, yeah, whoever are using it, I'm sure that the Building Commission negotiated a good deal.
Marcos, isn't it metal logos, do you recall?
I don't remember.
And I'll get, but yeah, they are in the process of getting this, this worked on as we speak, so-
Is this going to be a full color one?
Behind us, no.
Okay, what colors are it going to be?
Just exactly like that, with the blue and the gold.
Blue and gold, okay, that's the end of my questions, thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Have we, have we had these kind of rules before for all this stuff, or no?
No.
Okay, have we had some problems, or what?
If you, if I may-
Yeah, go ahead.
If you remember, when the County Government Awareness Committee brought this forward as an initiative to take a look at doing a article, actually, it was very simple, let's do an article in the NACO newsletter, National NACO Newsletter, on what does our seal mean? And all of a sudden, we found out we had five, or I don't know how many, it was more than one. And we, and we never really adopted, as, as a county board in any years prior, a, an official seal. And so thus the work began to say, let's create a seal that is our official county seal. And then I worked with Marcos, who, who gave this amazing template of a guideline from another county, Collier County. And so, again, we didn't, we, we just replicated, fit it to Douglas County guidelines, and then this will, again, guide people in what they can and cannot use, and how they should use it, and all that, which, again, you want that as a county, you want things to be uniform and standard, especially when it is the quote county seal-
Right.
You want everybody to use the, the same one, so-
That's right.
That's where that came from, that's why we have it now.
Okay. Are we able to get a full color seal for a stationary?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on there.
Yeah, it's on there.
Oh, I thought, gold, blue, and black.
And then you have full color-
What does all that cost, the color, I mean, it must increase dramatically?
Okay, now, with the blue, the metallic gold, and the black, we can do that in-house. The full color seal, you will have to go to an outside source on that, because our print shop can only do two colors at one time.
Okay.
So somebody will have to get a price on that.
Okay, well, I, I had my cards changed from what it was black to blue, and it cost me 10 bucks, I don't know who I paid, but I suppose if you want to do full color, then obviously you pay them yourself.
Yeah, and this, again, is our exclusive, only Douglas County seal, you cannot make any changes to the colors or the artwork of the seal whatsoever, like I said, if you pull up the document, we have different, you can, if one department wants to use a blue one, and another one wants to use a colored one, that is no problem whatsoever.
Okay.
But you just cannot change the, the seal, or change the colors of this whatsoever.
Okay, one last question, the layout of the business cards, is that consistent, you can't, you have to go with that, right? I think they really look good, that's what this city did years ago.
Yeah, and we gave examples on the documentation of letterhead, envelopes, and the business cards, so-
Okay, well, I think it's great, I think you've done a terrific job, thanks, whoever was doing all this, thank you.
Thank you, thanks to Mary Ann and Marcos both. And Diane Carlson, she helped when Marcos was away for a short time, so thank you, Diane, also.
Diane was checking the spelling, was that it?
Well, Commissioner Tusha really led the charge through the County Government Awareness Committee on this whole seal process, so-
Right.
What we will be talking about today in our County Government Awareness meeting is taking that next step and talking about a county logo, and the, and the branding process, and what would, what we would have to do in order to have that here in Douglas County.
I guess I do have another question, are we, with all this email changes that's coming down, are we changing our email addresses?
I asked that question of Dotcom, because we're moving to Google, and he said, Derek Cruz, the CIO, said that he was working with Diane Wallace while the email, the Google implementation was more of the priority than the email, we were working, she was working with departments and offices, and I think this board needs to pass a policy that says everybody has the same email.
Oh, yeah.
It is a disaster with the number of different emails we have in this county, and so I think that we were, we should put a resolution on saying that as we move towards Google, this, this board's policy is everybody moves towards the same email address, I mean, that just makes sense, I mean-
Well, because I have to, I call Karen, Zach can't figure out how to send an email to-
I know.
The engineer's office, or whoever it is, you know, and the assessor and everybody, and the county court has DC times four or something, I, what is that?
Right, yeah.
So anyway, it's, yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Yep.
Commissioner Kraft?
And, and have you given thought as to how we will get the courts and the other entities to-
That's what Diane's working on, Diane Wallace is-
Because we do have the big stick of the budget.
Right. Right. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Tusha?
And, and I apologize, I also have to thank Dotcom with Diane Wallace, because of the fact that she's been very, very helpful about putting this documentation and all the different seals on the website. So you'll be able to go to the website, and I believe that there's going to be a link, and then that'll link you to whatever seal, to the seals, and then you can choose what seal you want to go ahead and for your, whatever you want to use it for. So I want to also thank Dotcom and Diane Wallace for all their hard work also.
And you know, Commissioner Boyle made a point earlier about, we have a valuable resource of employee, employees are a valuable resource-
Right.
Here to the county, and I can't tell you how valuable Phil Rooney and Connie Leham is from the Health Department. Connie, honest to gosh, this, she did that seal creation, I mean, she's that good at being able-
Wow.
To manipulate things, and the creativity and the, you know, conversation, and then she put something together, she, she is amazing. And so we, we kind of had her back and forth going, you know, a gazillion different drafts of it, but she did all of that for us, and so, and again, Phil, who kind of kept everything straight for us, so your, your point of having a valuable resource right here in-house, this is a prime example-
That's right.
Of what can be done, so-
One more.
Yep.
And again, I thank you for that, I, I'm missing so many people. Phil has been very patient with me, he, he sends me these emails, some nice and some a little bit more bold than that, but we want, we have, as a county, we have a Facebook page, and he's been wanting to release our Facebook page, and I wouldn't let him until we had the new seal approved, so Phil, thank you for that. And Connie also, oh my gosh, we gave her the seal, and, and she'd do something, and again, it was like with Marcos, I'd say, no Connie, I don't like that, so that she changed that, no Connie, I don't like the color, and she changed that, or she'd take a tree out, or whatever. Connie, you are a godsend with this seal, I mean, I've talked to her more the last several months than I have my own family, because we've been so diligently working on this. So again, I apologize if I missed anybody, but thank you to everybody who worked hard on this.
Absolutely. Commissioner Boyle?
Do we need a motion to approve, or move on?
We have that.
Have that?
Yep, yep.
I seconded it, okay, shall we vote?
Okay, please vote.
Motion passes.
Next.
Thank you.
Okay, awesome, we are set to go, so Phil, you can go ahead and run with the Facebook page with the new seal, and Diane Wallace, you're set to go to put it on the internet for everyone, thank you.
What seal, color?
We'll move to the Community Service-
Whatever you want to use.
We'll, we'll move to the Community Service Committee, there's one item, Commissioner Kraft?
We have a request to reallocate within a grant that was awarded to Metro Community College Foundation, money from one of the acceptable uses to another acceptable use. I'll let Marcos explain it, if anybody needs explanation as to the detail, it's just a simple shifting of funds from one accounting column to another, and I would move for the approval. But I'd also like to point a personal privilege after this.
Okay. No other questions or comments? Please vote.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We will have a community service meeting coming up, Karen Cole is working on the date, we've been having a terrible time trying to schedule it, because of the conflicts of my time and Kent Holmes' time, we will have- We will have four items on it. One is to approve a contract that has to be signed by the first of next month regarding, oh, Kent's not here, is he?
No.
Okay. Does somebody remember what that contract is? Is that the one for the State Street?
Oh, the landfill.
Landfill?
The gas, methane.
Well, no, that one we approved already.
There's a few issues. I'm not exactly sure which one was the one that had the deadline.
Yeah, I don't remember which one of the four issues had the deadline. But it will most likely be on a Monday or Wednesday because it looks like our Tuesdays are pretty booked up. And so I'd appreciate if anybody could show up for that.
Are you buying lunch or anything?
I might, you know, I might.
Well, then I might be able to be there. I might be able to be there then.
I might ask what the correctional facility would cost me to have sandwiches prepared.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question.
Thank you. We'll move to Human Resources. The Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service as presented, if there are no questions or comments. The Weekly CAO Report on Staff Assault. Mr. Bloomingdale?
There were a couple assaults at Corrections this week. Fortunately, there were no serious injuries that resulted therefrom.
Any questions or comments on that? Next is the Legislative Initiatives. And again, we are preparing for our legislative package. We will also be presenting that during conversation with the Tri-County Retreat, and then also planning on the Senators' Breakfast, and then that will roll into the strategic planning as well as a budget meeting. So that's being worked on. Commissioner Boyle?
We have, we also have the interim studies coming up.
Yes.
That we need to speak to Sean Kelly about, see who's going to speak about what.
We, I probably, we probably better check with him. He did send out the, when we requested where everything was.
Right.
And they were gathering information, but none of them that I know of yet have been set for a date. Is that correct? Yeah.
I had a meeting with Sean and some of the taxpayer folks, and there were some dates that were banded around. I'll see if I can pick that up somewhere.
Okay, yeah, okay. Well, I'll send another request to Sean for that too, to send out to everybody.
And I think one of them dealt with the cost that the county attorney has to pay to file fees, and it caught the eye of the Supremes, and they're not very happy about it. So we may not be proceeding with that one. Well, I'm just saying.
Well, just saying.
It is the Judiciary Committee, and the Supremes don't like it.
Okay, that, another time. Commissioner Kraft?
Yes. You know, that comment I just made about serving lunch from the correctional facility, seeing what they would charge me, maybe, perhaps it wouldn't hurt if we invited our state senators to a meeting in the correctional facility and paid them, their contractor to service the breakfast.
They may not let someone out.
That's my hope in some cases. But, and the other is, we buy sandwiches for certain lunches such as the criminal justice, yes. Perhaps we could save some money by having the contractor at the correctional facility provide those lunches. Because the two I've eaten had one thin slice of meat on it, and when I saw the sandwiches down at the correctional center, they had more meat. I didn't eat one, but.
Okay, this is deteriorating. Is there a need for executive session from anyone? Okay, wow. Yes. We have County Government Awareness at 3:00 in Room 903 today. With that, is there a motion to, Commissioner Boyle?
The, one of the things, thank you. One of the things that I noticed when I was going through the items for the agenda is that there are social security numbers on some of the information that are in our packets. And it dealt with, the one I saw dealt with a claim from a person, so I want to make sure we get that expunged. It was in a letter and the response back or something. Anyway.
Oh, most definitely.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Second, is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.